To our special meeting. Councilmember Ed Smith was able to join us because there has been an Internet problem downtown, and we're glad that you're back. The Internet has been partially restored, at least.
Perfect.
Good. And in a moment, I'm going to ask our balanced, there's one, your balanced Assistant City Manager, Nat, to, one, give us an update on the Internet problem that we faced and appreciate everybody's patience. We're starting a half hour late. Then, secondly, just explain the format of the meeting. So Nat, I'm going to turn it over to you, and then after that, we're called to order, and after that, we'll do the pledge and open our hearing. So if you'll just explain what our SNAPU was and how we're going to conduct our business, please.
Yes, yes, Nat, thank you, Mayor Riverfin. And the SNAPU today had to do with the Internet outage that is, we believe, still ongoing in parts of downtown Monterey. Many of you know, we work with our partners at Access Monterey Municipal Outreach, also known as Access Media Productions, and they broadcast our council meeting out of an office in downtown Monterey that then goes to YouTube Live as well as Channel 25. They had to move their operations from downtown Monterey to Carmel this evening, so they were able to do it pretty quickly, given the circumstances and given the Internet outage. So we'll continue to run with this meeting, and we're currently broadcasting on YouTube Live as well as Channel 25. And as we've shared before, we encourage members of the public to watch using those two mediums and to make a public comment. When viewers are watching live on YouTube or Channel 25, you'll see a lower third caption on the bottom of your screen. Please call into the conference line. We have a new phone number for you to call into as well tonight. The phone number is 831-582-6500. Again, the phone number is 831-582-6500. That'll get you into the system, and no meeting access code is needed. You'll have to call right into our meeting. We do ask that you still please dial star five to raise your hand, and then you'll be added into the queue to speak. That way, we know whether or not you're just listening by phone or whether you intend to speak. Callers will be automatically unmuted until it's their turn to speak. Callers, please turn off your television or computer effects or go to another room while connected by a phone as background noise more likely reveals the broadcast. And I'll be calling on each call in their order if hands raised. Also calling out the last four digits would be caller's phone number before I unmute them. Those are the instructions for today's meeting. And again, thank you, everyone, for your patience this evening and this afternoon.
Exactly, and we really appreciate our staff going in to work on this. And so we'll call our meeting to order. It's my pleasure to introduce your city-carrying city council to you, Dan Albert, Alan Hoffa, Ed Smith, and Tyler Williamson. And it's my honor and pleasure to be your mayor and the city that we all love and take care of together. And you will soon hear from our very bright staff as we go forward. Nat, will you put the American flag on our screen, and we'll do our pledge of allegiance, please?
Will do, presenting my screen now.
All right, Nat, thank you. So if everyone would join me in their pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We have two public hearings this afternoon. One is time-sensitive in that the city needs to have a public hearing and pass an ordinance with respect to creating an underground utility district. We're looking at a timeline. If we don't take that action, we will potentially be losing some of the undergrounding credits that we have with PG&E. And also, as part of that discussion, I've been attending some of the undergrounding subcommittee meetings that are sponsored and run by the Monterey Vista Neighborhood Association as well as Old Town Neighborhood Association. And I will have a brief discussion about what the CPUC, California Public Utilities Commission, requirements are and what we can do going forward, because I think there is a strong desire in many of our neighborhoods to underground utilities, one from a viewpoint of fire safety and also aesthetics. So we'll see how that goes and what role that we can play at this point and how that relates to what the item is. Then the second item will be the official placing of a potential increase in the transient occupancy tax, otherwise known as the TOT, or hotel tax, on the ballot. That would be a culmination of hours and hours of meetings, public comment, outreach, all of which has been very stimulating and challenging in many ways. So tonight would be the official action. That is, if we have full Internet access and we know everyone can participate, that would be the official action of placing it on the ballot. Where it might sound like it's the end, it's actually the beginning, because at that point, should that pass, and it does take a supermajority, then it will be in the hands of the voter, who will ultimately make that decision. So with that, we'll go to our first public hearing, and that's with regard to undergrounding utilities. And at this point, the North Fremont has been on the city books since 2015 and would be, at this point, again, the designated site. So with that, I'll turn it over to our benevolent city manager, who can introduce whomever he needs, please.
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. The council tonight is doing a formal action to ensure that the Rule 28 funding that we have accumulated since 1967, which is something in excess of $4.4 million, I believe, that those funds remain with the city of Monterey. And this is an allocation of funding towards a commercial district. It's funding that has been collected for, to be used in commercial areas. And without further ado, I hand it over to our Public Works Director, Steve Witry, and I think he also has Tom Hardy, a senior engineer, close by for, in case he needs any help.
Thanks, Hans. Yes, I have Tom next to be in the background maintaining our six-foot distance for social distancing. So we're doing what we can to keep ourselves here safe and still get the information for you. What I'd like to do is present my screen before we go here. I hope that this works for us. I don't know if that worked or not. Did that work?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay. Nothing yet.
Yep.
Are we there?
Yeah. Perfect.
Sounds good. Well, as was introduced, this item is to hold a public hearing regarding the, whether it's in the public interest or necessity, I mean, health, the safety needs to underground utilities in the North Fremont area. As was pointed out, this action is a continuation of direction given to the city staff in 2015, where we identified that the Del Monte Underground District was not feasible due to land considerations and directed staff to push towards the next on the list, which was North Fremont. In that time, staff has worked with the various utility companies, being PG&E, being AT&amp;T, being the cable company providers, as well as Cal-Am and a host of other agencies, working through a process to determine feasibility of the borders for the North Fremont area. Just as a note, there's criteria that are established by the CPUC, California Public Utilities Commission, to utilize the Rule 28 credits. And I think that there's, before I go to the, well, maybe just go ahead and go through this process. Basically, the four points are to eliminate unusually heavy concentration of overhead wires on streets extensively used by the public with heavy volume of pedestrian or vehicular traffic, on streets passing through recreational areas or other areas of unusual scenic interest to the public, or on an arterial street or a major collector. It's clear that the North Fremont area hits three of four of those, three of the four requirements on them, although there is only requirement to hit one to utilize those funds. As we met with our different agencies out there, what we do is, as staff, we determine what makes the most sense in terms of the formation of a boundary. And then that area is determined, essentially, in our area here in North Fremont, it goes back one property length or basically half of the block into the quote-unquote residential areas for that delineation. What happens at that point is, was we're meeting with our project partners, being PG&E and other utilities out there. They look at the feasibility, does it hit those four requirements? And they do a, it's a little bit more than a back-of-the-envelope sketch, but what they do is a comparison of the anticipated cost with presenting a district like this against our available funds. And they need to make that determination, whether it's a viable district to go forward with or not. The city received word that this was a viable area, and that would be going forward, and that kind of cleared the way for us to move forward with this particular district as presented. Couple of background things as well for clarity's sake. And unfortunately, we're all a little bit casual with the way we talk about fund, including in my own presentation. We get caught in the words of actual dollars versus credits. What we're entirely talking about here are credits. The dollars are collected from all of our utility bills, and a portion goes into a pool. The pool is collected and oversight by the CPUC. And then what happens is projects are brought forward, and they utilize funding from that pool as a one-to-one correlation to the credits each city has earned. They're allocated to different cities based upon population, essentially. The credits that we have, they accrue until a project can be designed and constructed. In normal situations, they're not lost, they accrue with us. As I was pointed out, we have a balance of roughly $4.5 million of credits, and each year, we get another approximately $132,000 credits for our projects. So basically, what we're looking at doing in the general process of how we utilize those credits is we have the direction from a governing board, city council in this case, that identifies us to utilize an area or go towards an area. We meet with our partners, which we have done, and then we bring formal action to the city to establish an underground district. In our city, we also have an ordinance requirement that goes along with that action to create an ordinance to support that district. That's where we are today. If today goes through, and it's the second meeting and the ordinance is adopted, basically, what'll happen is PG&E will take their estimates and revise them into real construction documents. And they'll identify construction estimates, costs of each component based on the district and serving the district with the existing uses that are there. That'll have price. And basically, what'll happen is they will have an estimate of what would be each property owner's share within the district, and what would, so we all understand what components are covered by the district, by the credits, and what components would be covered by the person, the person's property. As an example, the cost that a personal property owner may bear. If we have a hotel, for example, that has an existing utility service that is installed and it's dated, their service at their own facility is dated and could not easily connect to a new underground service because of codes or change or what have you, that property owner would need to upgrade their service to accept the new power. So individual costs would vary by the property ownership and the property situation. Those kinds of dollars would be identified prior to a vote. And what would happen would be a vote of the property owners to either go or no-go with the conversion process. That is not, that is a vote that happens in the future once all the costs and the project impacts are understood. If it's approved, basically, the service process would start, construction would begin in the streets, and then the final step would be the existing poles would be removed after all the service connections have been made. The entire process is not months, it's years. So we have to have that expectation that this is not something that we're going to approve today, and then PG&E is going to get on our streets with the big yellow trucks and construction equipment by the end of the year. It's a process that takes time, and it will be years. We hope to have this thing wrapped up by 2025 is our hope, but these things have a way of growing their own lives, so.
Steve, excuse me a minute, Steve, before you, Mary Clyde here, before you leave that last slide, bullet number three, I think, is one that would pertain to any underground utility district, and that is, how much is it going to cost me as the property owner? And so the clarification there would be PG&E with these funds, if there are enough, would underground the utility, let's say, down the middle of the street? Then at that point, it would be the responsibility of each property owner to connect to it? Is that correct? I think a little elaboration on, if people are going to vote for a district, the first thing I would ask is, how much is that going to cost me?
Certainly, and those totals would be figured out, essentially, as the district is established and into that second voting process, because that's a very important key factor, is what will it actually cost me to actually have this go forward? There is generally some owner cost that will go along with this process. The main line will be undergrounded. There's the provision within the Rule 28 program to have some offsetting cost for the actual connection interface with that main line. In many cases, it's limited to $1,500, which may not be enough to get it to the actual resident. And I say, that's why what the next step after the formation is that detailed report which identifies the estimated cost for each and every one of those property owners that are on that, that are in that district. Then they will have that understanding of what will be the cost to them. Interesting to note, as you say, though, the passing of that vote is a 50% plus one. It's a simple majority. There are individuals in that district who don't want it for whatever reason, and they're outvoted. They will be outvoted, and the service will go forward. And we'll have to figure out how to, they will have to figure out, us as a community will have to figure out those costs if they're unreasonable to particular property owners. Those are, yeah.
What would, let's explore that a little bit. Would PG&E bear the full cost of the undergrounding? So the conduits in the middle of the street? Then at that point, they would absorb that. Then at that point, each property has to decide, when they vote, how much is it going to cost me to connect to the conduit, so to speak? If it's a river, how much is it going to cost me to put a straw into it?
Essentially, yes.
And then the cost would be, the cost would be, I'm sorry, just one more question. The cost would be, two. One would be to get the straw to connect to the, my building, so to speak, as it were, to the conduit that's been in place. Then, secondly, I have to look at the capacity of my electrical panel. For example, up in many neighborhoods, the electrical panels are, in my neighborhood, are 65 years old, and they would have to be upgraded. And normally, you're talking $2,000 to $3,000 just for a panel. And if it's a commercial property, you're probably talking tens of thousands.
That's correct, and that would fall to the property owner.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I have a question before we move on?
Yes, please, Councilmember Dan.
Thank you, I have two questions, Steve. First, could you put the map back on? Can you put that back on? On the south side of Fremont, there's that small alley right next to, on the other side of Dundee. There's power lines going through on that small alley. Do those power lines, do they service the residential and the, and the commercial? Because I would think that Dundee, the residents would be a part of that, if that's part of the district. That's true.
So, yeah. And it's hard to tell from this map, and I don't have a picture of that exact area, but there's certain lines that would not be undergrounded. There's a high, I'm going to call it a high-tension system of about six wires on a fairly large hole, in the order of about 100 feet tall, that go from the PG&E substation through the alley towards the Fairgrounds property and beyond. That, undergrounding of that utility will not happen. It's too expensive, frankly. That kind of undergrounding for that level is millions of dollars per mile.
So basically, Steve, I don't mean to interrupt you, but basically, it's the poles that are actually on Fremont Street. It's not the poles on the backside.
Correct.
Okay. Then the second question is, the $4.4 million, that's where I'm a little confused. Where that, how does that apply? The mayor just said, well, if it doesn't apply, PG&E pays for all the costs down the middle of the street. Does that mean that you can apply that $4.4 as a, as something for the owners to use? I just don't know what that money is used for.
That money is used to pay PG&E's costs. So the $4.5 million, that, those credits that we have are used to cover the cost of the utilities and their installation. There's nothing left that we can use that for our property owners. There's a maximum limitation of $1,500 that is allowed, though.
So the $4.5 is for PG&E's cost to run it down the middle of the street, and that's it? Got it.
Correct.
Thank you, that was one of the questions I had. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? Steve, did you want to continue and wrap up your presentation, please?
Sure, yeah, no worries. I think we've covered that slide. Why now? Why are we here today? There's been, obviously, a lot of discussion that the community has had regarding undergrounding. We've had NCIP projects that were recently, unfortunately, defunded that would help with some of this clarification of undergrounding costs, some for neighborhoods. Why are we here now at this point? It seems to be non-congruent with where we're heading as a city. There are portions, provisions in the CPUC regarding the use of this pool of money and how this pool can be utilized. As I mentioned, when we go through an initial analysis of a process of a project, the city meets with the affected utilities to come up with an estimate for this process, and then it can take time to actually come up with the final actual construction dollars. As we understand it, this is the case with the city of Live Oak in Sutter County, California. They have a project which initially had enough funding in it, but due to various concerns as the project developed, they are now short of funding. The rules that the CPUC has to incentivize municipalities not to sit on large funding and to move projects forward is that, A, the CUP can reallocate shortfall from quote-unquote inactive communities to make that project move forward in cities such as Live Oak. So Live Oak has a current shortfall of basically half a million dollars. And what the CPUC has put us on notice is that we do not have an active district as of today, and we are subject to be reallocated some of our credits to fund that city of Live Oak project. We're not alone in this. We're one of about 98 that were notified in March of 2020. We, it's uncertain, in March of 2020, we were identified that we would have about 20,000 of our credits be utilized to assist the city of Live Oak that would come out of our existing $4.5 million that we have there. Now, what we don't know is how many cities have actually become active in that point in time. We're aware of, at about, from our PG&E representative that we've been dealing with in a conversation, that there's about at least 10 other communities that are taking similar actions to us during this period of time, but we don't know how many others beyond that. What will happen is on August 12th, the deadline for the notice, the CPUC will re-allocate. the CPUC will reallocate that funding and identify who is active, who is inactive. And they will take that portion from our credit balance. So today, we're here to try to establish this district that was set forward in, in 2015, to try to utilize our funding to not lose any credits to a different agency and to try to move the projects forward. One other thing I'd like to point out that, that we have going forward is what we've also been notified by League of Cities, and League of Cities has a legal analysis that they do, and it came through our city attorney's office, where we got noticed, and, and me and Mr. Hardy attended a seminar on this process. The CPUC is looking at changes to the 28 program or the Rule 20 program. Part of it is in, in reference to the potential, the issues with fire. And to have fire services be another point that could qualify a, an area for this funding. Also in that conversation, though, was what seemed to be more apparent from the, the staff who manages program, that what they are looking actually is a dissolution of the 20 program, which then push the burden of trying to apply a taxation process to the residents within the city to achieve those same goals. It's clear that, that the CPUC has a pro, has a program, these, these programs typically take, you know, from conception to construction, seven, eight years. That's not, that's a lot longer than they first anticipated it would be, and they're not considering that to be a rousing success. And they're looking at ways to regenerate and reutilize and re-invigorate that process. And part of the discussion certainly is about adding another bullet point. But a, a, a larger voice, it seems, in my view, this is just one person's view, that there seems to be a larger voice to dissolve the entire process and come up with a different plan, which would require the cities to create a taxation element to fund these programs within themselves. So there's a lot of ways that this could turn, and, and that we would want to get ourselves, you know, quote unquote locked into a process as soon as possible to protect us from any kind of action that might, that might come forward. So that's, that's what I have in terms of a presentation. Obviously, any further questions, we can go to. And then I would just ask, you know, perhaps we can start the, the public hearing process to hear.
Good, thank you very much, Steve, for being on top of a fairly complicated process. A little bit disconcerting that there's a possible dissolution of Rule 20A. And, and because that's, some of that funding is used for creating districts. So going forward, we'll have to see what the CPUC has to say. Any questions before we go public? Councilmember Allen, please, and then Councilmember Ed.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. So I sent a couple of questions to staff before the meeting, and I understand the answers. But for the benefit of the public, I think I want to ask at least the one. I think you already covered the second, which had to do with what if we don't, you know, what, what much is actually at risk? And it sounds like about $20,000 in credits is currently at risk. Potentially more if other agencies get active, though, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, the, the other question, the primary one was, so I understand in 2015, we were looking at trying to revitalize North Fremont. I think the thinking was that making the streetscape there more attractive might attract redevelopment. You know, might, might incentivize redevelopment interests. But of course, since then, we've had issues with fire and, and as it relates to utilities. So my question is, and you kind of covered it, but if council wanted to, could we identify a different district? What, you mentioned some of the criteria. Would, would an area like Skyline Drive, for example, which is obviously in a forested area, it's, I would say, an area of natural beauty. I can't, I don't have the criteria in front of me, but I think it would hit several of those criteria. So I'm not sure if there's a lot of overhead wires there or how that's defined. I, I know there are some pretty major wires going through there. It is a heavy, it is a heavy vehicular traffic street, I would say. I would say it is unusual scenic beauty, and it is an arterial street. But if we did, could we do that? And then if so, how, how long would it set us back? And what would the risk be essentially?
Certainly, so essentially, what we have to do is look at what area the council would want us to investigate in. And then we would have to set the coordination meetings with different staples and so forth. You know, it, it's not, one aspect of it, it's, it's not really, I like this, it's, it's pretty. So I want to say that it's pretty, and that therefore it should hit bullet number three, if you still see my, my screen on this, on this process. You know, they have to be actually identified in some kind of document as, you know, Governor's Office of Planning and Research, for example, or under the General Plan Guidelines and so forth, those documents which define those terms. So it's not quite as, you know, I would think this is therefore beautiful, therefore it should qualify. That being said, certainly the council could identify or direct staff to go in a different direction, whether it's Skyline, whether it's Pacific Street, whether it's Canary Row for that, for that example. They could direct staff to do that. What would happen if we do go in that process? Is that staff would then have to reschedule meetings and do the outreach and coordination with the different sites. And it's more than just, you know, having someone from the PG&E main office come down and looking at us and marking the site. There's a lot of background and research that goes along with that, within those respective agencies before they come onto our site. What we'd be looking at is essentially a restart. Now, granted, the, this process on North Fremont, as we had, you know, Measure P rolling out, and we had various challenges, others that we were going forward, it was not hot and heavy on our front burner the entire time since 2015. However, there is a good 12, maybe 15 months of work that has to go into establishing, to get us to a point where we are today with North Fremont. By establishing the area, the feasibility with that process, the feasibility of the funding. That has to be looked at, and it would take us about 12 to 15 months to get a different area that was identified tonight, perhaps, or in the near future, an alternate site to the point we are with North Fremont. In that interim time, there's a couple of things that could happen. As this has been going through, this is a fairly new process that agencies are seeing their, their funding be reallocated. And I'm sure it's like us, is energizing other agencies to be more proactive. As that happens, other agencies may have different challenges with allocations, and they may come to us again to the, to look for covering various shortfalls with their individual projects. We have no way to forecast what that level would be. But we certainly know that without having a district established, we would be subject to continual allocation, reassignments from this, from the CPUC. So lose, you know, 20,000 here, perhaps 40,000 here, it's, it's unknown. But that exposure could certainly exist until we're able to take that time, that, that 12 to 15 months, to bring something back to the, to the council that could hit that, that mark.
Now, even if we adopt the utility district there tonight as proposed, does that essentially move us into active status and give us protection? Or is there an additional step? Like, do we have to get to the point where the property owners vote?
No, the status of the district is active. We become active, assuming that we go through this process and we're successful. We become active and our fund, our, our, our credits are, are safe. This does not, however, commit us to actually doing it until that vote of the property owners happens after that assessment happens. So it's, it kind of gets us into, into a really good space in terms of preserving our credits and still pushing that on a little forward so that the property owners, we're not really totally committing them until that property vote happens. That vote still is a key piece that has to happen before any kind of property-related fees would be assessed.
And I know in the past, North Fremont Business District supported this. I don't know if you or, or if our representative can share any insights on that. Are they still supportive?
Yes, yes, they are supportive. There was a letter submitted from the North Fremont Business Association yesterday that is part of the public record in which they supported that. If council recalls, we had originally the Underground Utility District located in the Canary Row area. And then in 2015, understanding the need to create some attention and also to focus our, our economic development potential into the North Fremont area as part of this whole package deal with respect to enhancing the streetscape, with it, with respect to the North Fremont specific plan also. At that time, council felt it was, it was appropriate to reallocate it into the North Fremont area as a North Fremont Underground Utility District. Lastly, what is important also, just to take away, is, is that what Steve just said. This is a very formal response to protect our funding. This is the first time that I can remember that actually our 28 funds are actively threatened. So we, we have to do something by allocating to that. We are just protecting our funds. That will allow the council, as well as others, to look and, and, and consider a bunch, a bunch of those questions that you just recently, just raised a moment ago, Councilmember Harper. So this is a formal act to protect our funding from grabs from others. This is the first time in the history that I can remember that actively agencies are going, and CPUC is going after our money. And with that action today, tonight, you are just preserving our funds for us. And there are a lot of other steps we can take after that.
Great, great questions, and was it Ed? Ed, you wanted to chime in, please?
Yes, Alan, I think you covered one of those questions, and it had to do with the timeline. So tonight is a public hearing that we would take action for. And that activates, and it sounds like the answer was that we would then have an active project that we would preserve the, the assets that we're talking about, whether it's 20 or 40,000. So that's encouraging. The other part was the timeline of next steps that would involve the business owners for the vote. Since we're doing a hearing, maybe if you could walk us through, that might alleviate some of the questions that would come from the public. But what would be next if we approved this tonight? And the property owner's responsibility and the timing of that? And then what would happen after that approval?
So I'm not sure if you can still see my screen or not, but, but here's the timeline of the general process. Tonight is the current action. Following tonight's action, PG&E will return and act as the lead for AT&amp;T, for Comcast, for the various utilities in terms of the design coordination. They will go through that actual real design effort. And just so you're aware, part of that design effort is borne by a 4.5 million credits. So that's another aspect of it. There is that desire to push the project forward. That starts the expendable process of those funds to get us to a point of construction. So they will do that, they will provide quotations, they will provide the actual cost going forward. That will be presented to the property owners with the process for a vote. And that vote will be very similar to, to, it won't be exactly the same, and I'll let Karen chime in as possible, but very similar to our vote process that we had the other day for our, our assessment districts, where we need to have the vote from those, those property owners. Once that vote is taken care of, there will be an additional mobilization process as those contracts that were estimates going into that turn into construction contracts and construction documents. There's a little bit of a delay between that process. So in terms, and then on that, there's construction, and after construction is when the poles are removed. To put ballpark lines to that, after today's estimate, we can anticipate about 12 to 15 months for PG&E to come back with their construction documents. We would go through a process that may take up to four months for noticing and so forth for the property owners, and to get that education process so they know what's going on. Which puts us at about 20 months from today. If it's approved, we would go through the existing service and net connection process. The hope with that would be we would get something done, when we look in 2024, or, three? 2020, we'd be looking at the construction in 28, 23, early 24, and the whole thing wrapped up in 2025, potentially, is what we're kind of shooting for.
Somebody else in your office that could give you a better answer, like 2022?
Yeah. It, it's hard because of forecasting how quickly PG&E works.
No, I understand that.
Yeah, yeah.
And Steve, I appreciate, I appreciate the timeline, because that, that would be ever-present in a lot of folks' minds. Because if there's a property owner responsibility for upgrades to be prepared for that, that gives them all an opportunity to be prepared for that in the next year and a half. As PG&E is processing through, property owners could then also likewise be prepared with their own onsite electrical upgrades. So this is not a surprise to the property owners coming.
I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, that's all the questions I had, Mayor.
Mayor, just one. Answered that, Steve, it was, yes. Councilmember Dan, please.
Thank you. Steve, I think I, I'd like to kind of comment on what Alan was talking about, other areas of the city of Monterey. And what I'm hearing is the electric Rule 20A has to do with commercial funding, which I understand that that can't be used in other areas. And I, I understand that Rule 20 also has a B and C, which applies to other parts of, of the city. And since its decision was made in 2015, and if it's appropriate, I, I would, I'm sure the public would like to see maybe a presentation on what B and C means, how do you apply for those particular funds? What can those funds be used for, if there's any funds at all? I mean, you don't have to answer that question now, Steve. It's just that if those funds can't be available for other parts of the city, then maybe we can use them some other way.
Certainly, and I can actually just, from, from a, from a 30,000-foot level, there's actually Rule 20A, there's Rule 20B, Rule 20C, and Rule 20D, which is specifically reserved for San Diego area. They have a special legislation that was put in. They have a lot of attorneys that can work for them and lobby in Sacramento to get their legislation happening for them. So San Diego has a, has a specific Rule 20D that relates only to them. B and C are typically used when it's a developer-paid or it's an owner-paid process. The access of 20A and the access to these credits is only 20A. And that's why it goes to the public benefit. The B and C aspects of it really rely upon, picture a, a, a developer who wants to put something, and say he's in Marina and he's developing a subdivision, and he wants to connect that process. There may be the, the ability to tap into that ruling, so when he's establishing those homes for sale, they can pretend, they, they can participate through that cost process into the reimbursement of his investment into the undergrounding system. So for the B and C, they really relate more to what is funded from an alternative source, not these particular credits. There is some percentage that's allowed, but it's not nearly the percentage that's allowed in this aspect of it. I can certainly, we, we've done a presentation to council in the past, and we certainly can do another one in the future to, to remind folks of, of exactly how that breakdown happens. But there are, there are, as you point out, different chapters in Rule 20.
And we can't, we can't ask the PUCC if we could use any Rule 20A funds for other areas in the city? Can we apply for that? Or it's just very strict, those funds cannot be used for anything but commercial?
It's pretty strict. There are some small allowances, I'm going to say in the order of a 10% of the cost of it. I, I would have to look back at the documents. There are some allowance of some use of those funds towards that. Basically, what they're looking for is making sure that the funds are used for the overall public benefit and the overall public, well, overall public benefit.
Okay, great, thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, good, Steve. So that, just a final question. So in order for us as a city to underground in our forested, perhaps fire-prone or aesthetic skyline forests, et cetera, we would actually need a change in the CPUC orders. skyline forests, et cetera, we would actually need a change in the CPUC orders, protocols, and rules. And I know there have been some requests to that effect. Can you give us a status of that, please?
Certainly. Like I mentioned in earlier in this this year, there have been a couple of public hearing meetings regarding changes to the 20, Chapter 20 process. There has been the desire to include fire-prone areas as one of the requirements, particularly based upon the the disasters that happened recently with with the power lines and so forth and the safety aspects. That change has not happened from the PUC, CPUC yet. And it's hard to say when that will would happen or if it would happen and what form it would take. You know, it's, it's, it's something that they're considering, but it's, there's no timeline for it. And I think that part of the challenge that we have is with these competing timelines of they're wanting to have projects move forward and be expanded, so they're taking some of our funding, yet we don't have our credits. So but we don't have a clear answer what they're going to do or what the actual program will look like once changes are made. The CPUC is known for not making decisions quickly. They do not act on a dime. That that's, we had a public hearing, like I said, in March of this year, and we have not really heard anything from a result standpoint now. COVID has happened in that time as well, so there may be some alter circumstances. But we have not really heard of the process. They 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 move at a glacial pace.
Okay, good. Well, that's, I appreciate that answer to let us know what the status is. All right, so unless there are other council questions, I would ask Nat if we have any public comment?
Yes, we'll go ahead and open up public comment. And just a reminder to viewers, we do have a new call-in number here, and it is 831-582-6500. And for those who want to speak, please dial star five. And we'll start with Kayla Fossum. Kayla? Are you there?
Hi, this is Kayla Fossum. Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you. Can everyone else hear us? Yep, great.
Okay, okay, thanks. This is Kayla Fossum, president of Villa Del Monte Neighborhood Association, which borders the North Fremont Business Corridor. And first of all, I just want to, you know, my, what I'm hearing is your vote tonight is to establish the district, the underground district, and to preserve those credits. And I do not see why that would not be done. You did commit to the North Fremont undergrounding back in 2015. It certainly can use it. And I I understand, you know, the fire concerns that you're talking about in skyline forests and and the desire of other residential areas to have undergrounds. But I just want to point out that, you know, the council made a commitment to this side of town and to the North Fremont Business Corridor to improve it, you know, and Rich Rochella worked 30 years on getting that plan through. So even though this is just to establish the district, to preserve the funds, going forth, you know, this side of town deserves to be beautiful and impressive. So I just wanted to get that in and let you know that our neighborhood totally supports the underground district. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Kayla. Okay, we have one more caller, and let's see. Hi, Jean, are you there?
Hi, I'm here.
Okay, great. Thanks for joining us.
Jean Rash. Yeah, this is Jean Rash. The use of the word "commercial" is, I don't think, in the Rule 20, but it's, it's common that the Rule 20A funds commercial districts, just because they're highly, but something like Pacific Street with the huge abundance of lines on it and the heavy arterial use would would probably comply. So I, I just want, in the future, people to not always hear the word "commercial" because I think that word is inaccurate. Having said that, I totally support the passing of the measure tonight. That neighborhood has waited. Fremont Street has been on the map since 2015 for these funds. It's totally appropriate to proceed and support them in this effort. Any undergrounding helps all of us in terms of fire safety and in reducing the number of small cell towers that would be disincentivized by having the undergrounding, that would bring some safety to those neighborhoods. So I'm totally for it. And then let's get another district going to decrease the fire risks to all of us in the more flammable areas of town. Let's just do it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jean. All right, we also have a public comment from Leslie Smetich. Hi, Leslie, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Great. Well, good evening, councilmembers and Mayor Roberson. Thank you so much for having us on the agenda. I'm Leslie Smetich. I'm from Monterey Lane in the North Fremont Business District of Monterey. And we've actually been working on undergrounding North Fremont Street for the last 16 years since we accessed our inception of our business district. I believe that we were put into the second position under Delmont, behind Delmonte back in 2006. Somehow it came out of undergrounding being second position, and then we got back into second position, thanks to Rich Rochella and the Coen neighborhood. And then in 2015, I think we all believed that we actually had a district created. So we were kind of shocked that we didn't have it. So I really am asking for your support. I think that it will spur movement upon our district. Even during these times, it's going to take a long time, and hopefully by then we'll all be vaccinated. So our business will hopefully turn around. And I'm fully supportive of it, and we've been closed for four months, and I definitely would love to see it happen. I know the rest of the business and property owners would, and I believe that they will all support it. So I am hoping that you will create the district today.
Great. Yep, thanks, Leslie. Okay, our next comment comes from Wendy Brickman. Hi, Wendy. Wendy, are you there?
Hello?
Yep, hi, howdy.
Yes, now I can hear you. Hello, everyone. Yes, I just wanted to support what Leslie Smetich just said. I definitely support this. We've waited so many years for these funds. It will be safer, and I definitely don't want to lose the undergrounding credit, as the mayor said. And I have a strong desire to see it happen as soon as possible. So I just wanted to share that.
Well, thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Our next comment comes from Zoe Carter. Hi, Zoe.
Hello, I just want to, my name is Zoe Carter. I just want to continue the support for the North Fremont District. I think it's really important to keep investing in this side of town. You know, hopefully 2,200 North Fremont will be built, and it's critical that we keep investing in our infrastructure. And I had asked a while ago about the bike path was built, why this was done at the same time. And I think we need to continue to look at ways to not continue to keep picking up our streets over and over as well. So I would love to see this happen. I think this side of town needs more investment in it, and I would encourage the council to support this action. Thank you so much.
Great. Thanks so much. But we have no more callers who have raised their hands, so I think we will go ahead and close public comment on this item. We do have one caller, but no, no hand raised, so they may just be listening in. So we'll go ahead and close public comment if you'd like to, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you. We will close public comment. We want to thank our good friends Kayla, Jean, Leslie, Wendy, and Zoe for phoning in. It's always nice to have public comment when everyone's in favor of the staff recommendation and the action that we're going to take. And so we'll return it back to the council. It looks like our very bright Public Works Director wants to make a comment, please. Steve?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that that we were all clear. I had actually, when I spoke to the process, combined two processes into one. There, the two processes I'm talking about, the vote tonight and the public hearing is for establishing the district itself. In the future, an assessment district may require a second vote for the financial piece for the contribution. And I wanted to make sure that that the council and the public was aware that that's a two-pronged approach. Tonight's action and setting the district in the public hearing is for the district boundaries and the ordinance. In the future, there may be an assessment vote to assess based upon those estimates given by that study that happens beyond that. It's, I combined them inadvertently in some of my speech.
Yeah, understood. So the ordinance that you're presenting tonight is simply to establish the North Fremont area as an underground district.
Correct.
Step one. And and as a side effect, of course, is to preserve funding and not have it bleed away. So when we are ready to go, a bunch of other jurisdictions has taken it.
Correct.
All right, so council, you ready to move on it or any more comments?
I would move staff recommendation.
Second?
All right, we have a motion and a second for the first reading of the ordinance. And as just a quick comment, I think all of us appreciate that and also want to look, personally want to look forward to creating some other districts, especially in fire-prone areas, on North Pacific Street, which was mentioned, as well as Skyline. And so hopefully, we can keep working with the CPUC and have them realize that the rules will change as far as where we need to underground. Any more comments under the motion?
Yeah, the mayor, one question. Yeah, I echo exactly what you said. I think we have a two-step process to get this through, but also I think we're all committed to look at the the next area to prioritize, as some have been mentioning Skyline Pacific for fire-prone areas. So absolutely want to commit to that. And it's interesting, nothing happens fast, and we're glad that this program is currently in place and that we can quickly move and capture this and become an actual project to qualify. But in 2015, those on the council committed to the North Fremont District, and we've seen quite a number of improvement in projects out there in the last couple of years. So this is a continuation of that commitment for North Fremont. And I want to back up the commitment we made in 2015 to say yes to this district. That does not mean we're ignoring the other areas, but we, we do want to set those priorities after this gets going. And there's no reason why we can't look and see what the CUPC does on the the new programs, but identify the next project as a priority that's coming in years to come. So I look forward to that discussion as well.
Good, thank you.
Mayor, if I could?
Yes, please, Councilmember Tyler.
Just quickly, I really appreciate the conversation, and I know that there's a lot of support for the idea of undergrounding in the public. And so it might be beneficial, just kind of thinking strategically, thinking further ahead, for us to have a completely separate conversation about this as a council with the public outside of a regularly scheduled council meeting, just so we can have a conversation with the public and come up with some kind of strategic plan about how we want to move forward with prioritizing certain parts of the community.
Yeah, very good. I know the Monterey Vista Neighborhood Association, led by Jean Rash on this issue, as well as Old Town, meet regularly with their undergrounding meeting. And I attended the last one, it was very, very educational. So perhaps we can build on that as well. Good point. Councilmember Dan, please.
Thank you. It's nice to see that we actually have some money for undergrounding in the city of Monterey. That's always nice. And it's nice to see, as people have already mentioned, that it's an area of our city that I think we've spent a lot of money trying to to make it look very nice. And so I'm really happy that that's going to happen in that part of the city, too. Thank you.
All right, no one else for discussion. Roll call, please, Clementine.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Haffner?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
And that's a yes for me. Got to be on our toes, she doesn't do it alphabetically.
I'm not used to my name being called first, though.
I try to always randomize it.
Yes, you do. Well, give me a notice next time so I can wake up for my nap, will you please? Okay, the next thing on our agenda, before we go forward, I want to find out, Hans, I don't know if your hand's raised because we're a little bit concerned, and you may be speaking to this, about does everyone in the public have access to this discussion? Because it's very important, we want to make sure that we do have universal internet access. So Hans, I'm thinking that's what you're going to share with us, but please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we just checked again, Comcast outage map that told us that right now probably 2,500 users, mainly in the Jocelyn Canyon area, south of the airport in that area, might be without internet access right now. And for that reason, I think we we want to continue the TOT item because we want to be sure that what council action is today is widely heard and listened to and gives everyone an opportunity to speak. And I foresee challenges if we if we really are not sure that everyone is listening to us. I stated we checked 4 minutes, 5 minutes ago, 2,500 folks were still showing on the outage map by Comcast. That's a number that is, I would not feel comfortable going forward with.
No, and if you if you take those numbers of internet connections out and double them because you've got multi-occupied residents, we could be looking at 5,000 folks, yeah. That's good. That's good to know. Any council thoughts other than that?
Do we need a motion to table that? Or we need a motion?
Yes, I think so. Or continue it, continue it to our next meeting.
I just have one thing.
Yes, Tyler, please.
Would it be appropriate to see if anybody in the public has comments on this since they maybe joined in expectation of sharing comments and then just knowing that we will table this until next Tuesday? So knowing that, if you can save your comments until we we talk about it at the next council meeting, but if folks are here, to give them that opportunity.
Yes, excellent. That was very menural of you.
I learn from the best.
Oh, you're so nice.
Of course, Mr. Mayor, you run the, the risk that the comments are not heard by everyone who needs to hear the comments. So there is, there's a downside to that because you can play another argument. I would actually argue for clean continuance.
Well, is the, is the meeting being recorded?
Yes, I believe it is.
Okay. Maybe I'd like to ask our, our, our very bright, brilliant assistant.
Ambitious.
Attorney for, Karen, would you weigh in on that about should a public comment now with the understanding that we, we don't have a full audience? Or should we give those people the opportunity to speak as well next time? What do you think? We want to make sure that this is totally transparent and open.
Yeah, I mean, I do agree with Hans, it's cleaner to just continue it to a date, certain next meeting, the August 4th meeting, but it certainly wouldn't be improper if you wanted to hear the comments, post them with the recording before the next meeting.
Yes, okay, so that, that's, it could go either way. Tyler, do you feel strongly one way or another? I was inclined to open it up, but I'm thinking to err on the side of caution, maybe just ask everybody to weigh in August 4th, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I'm fine either way. I mean, I do always kind of lean on the side of allowing the public to participate. And so my fear is if somebody just happens to be here that's not available next Tuesday, that was my only concern.
Got it. Well, Nat, was there anybody in the queue who feels they, with the understanding they will not be able to speak on the August 4th meeting?
There's really, I mean, must be open it up, there's really no way to tell, and no one has called into the line right now.
Okay, so we don't have anybody in the queues. So I think we're probably pretty safe then to go ahead and continue it. So Dan, if you want to make a motion to continue to our August 4th meeting, is that the right day?
Yes, I like to move to, to continue this, this item until August 4th.
Second?
Second?
All right, any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Hafa?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
I was laughing. Yeah.
Was that a yes?
Yes.
Mayor Roberson?
Do I have a choice?
Yes.
With that, we will just reiterate before we adjourn that August 4th, we will have this item. And if possible, we will, I think it would be excellent to be the first item on our evening agenda. We'll have to take a look, we're going to have to massage our agenda from, because that's obviously next Tuesday, but we want to make sure, because this is a culmination of, of hours and hours and literally months of contemplation, discussion, et cetera. So we do want to bring this to a culmination and allow the voters to make the ultimate decision.
Mayor, may I make a suggestion that that would be an item for the 7 o'clock evening, the first item at 7 o'clock, correct?
Yes.
Instead of 4, right?
Yes, correct. Because we want maximum public participation.
I just want to have. Never mind.
Okay, so we, we had a motion at past 5:00 and I, I think that concludes our business for the evening. And we again are sorry that we had a little bit of internet glitch, but such is the world that we live in. So I wish everybody a good evening and we'll see you Tuesday. You're, you're going to go to sleep and wake up and you're going to go, it's Tuesday. What happened to my weekend? All right, everybody, good night.